The United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting to order, and I'll entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lackawanna County Disability Action Committee update, Mr. Keith Williams.
Morning, Keith.
Morning.
Good morning, Keith.
Morning, Commissioners, morning, everyone. Thank you for having us today. We appreciate the opportunity to kind of give you an update. All right, here comes Derek. Patrick, if you want to make your self-scene as well?
Yes, right here.
Oh, all right. Well, that was pretty quick. Patrick was in stealth mode. I didn't see. Yeah, I didn't see. No, I'm glad. Again, it's great to be here. On my right is Derek Rains, on my left, Patrick Williams. Pat has been on the Disability Action Committee for a few years now. Derek is in his first year, just joined us a few months ago. We wanted to get here and just to make sure that both the Commissioners, Lackawanna County Government, and all its entities and divisions and boards as a whole know that the Disability Action Committee, number one, is still around. As you know, from your own everyday activities, the pandemic really threw things through a loop, put us through the wringer there for a while. So we met virtually, but we wanted to let you know that we're back in terms of activities, collaborating with different areas of the county, and that we're here just as a general resource for any division or any part of the county that could use any information about getting input of people with disabilities in terms of accessibility, whether it's ADA compliance or in the past, I know that a couple of years ago, the committee was reviewing employment forms to make sure that there's compliant language. And I understand the legal department does that as well. They do a great job, but from the standpoint of somebody with a disability, to get that perspective on it. Well, our current initiative that we have is taking a look at parks and working with the Parks and Recreation Department within the county. We're going to be doing onsite access survey, a walk-through at McDade Park in a couple weeks, particularly any areas that have buildings, just in general, making sure that walking trails are wide enough to accommodate someone in a wheelchair or some kind of a mobility device. And it's our goal, our goal is to do park by park and get through. And again, from the standpoint of people with various disabilities, not just people who may be using a wheelchair, to get a sense of accessibility. We were able to participate back in June at the Lackawanna County Heritage Fair. We tabled there. We had our information, provided information about the committee to passersby, the public about Lackawanna County, this committee, what the initiatives are in terms of our advocacy work for people with disabilities.
You'll be pleased when you get down to McDade with the new pool project and splash pad that I was just there yesterday.
Yeah.
It's beautiful. Pool's days away from being open. Everything is done, everything's state of the art, so you'll be very impressed with that.
Wonderful.
Yep, very nice.
It's great. It really is.
Yeah.
And I think we've been pretty progressive in the way we've done things with the parks so far. And we have other things to do. The only thing you need, Keith, is, as you know, is money.
Right, right.
Just, it's life. But yeah, the pool did turn up.
It's great.
Unbelievable.
Oh, that's great.
You got to get up there.
Yes, yeah.
Make it a point.
Yeah.
Thank you. And we're glad to have you here today.
Look forward to that. I just, I, my colleagues want to say anything?
My name is Derek Rains. I retired from Toby Hannah Army Depot. I was an occupational safety and health specialist, and one of my things that I did was provide handicapped accessibility to all of the employees at Toby Hannah, whether they were blind, deaf, amputee, whatever their problem was. One of my jobs was to get them so they could get in their workplace and feel comfortable doing their job. But unfortunately, multiple sclerosis ended my 28 years of federal service, and I'm more than happy to join with Keith and be able to do whatever I can because I still have all those, I'm a certified OSHA specialist, so I worked for OSHA for a while, and I'm just happy that somebody actually listens to me as opposed to most people who say, "Oh, don't listen to him." Sorry. I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
If I may, just briefly, I'm thrilled that the county lets us have the Disability Committee and under the leadership of Keith, we get a lot of things done. We do things, and it's all for people with disabilities, et cetera. The reason I got, I joined is my oldest son, Eric, his youngest guy is a Down Syndrome baby, but he's 10 now, and he's getting older. And as you move on up in age, you realize, we had Keith Herman Johnson and myself when I was a constable in Clark Summit with the curb cuts. That's a big thing. Curb cuts, I never used curb cuts. I use them now. So anyway, it seems some of those small things are so, so important, and I want to thank the county for all the things that they've done. And every time I come here, I always make a little spiel for the shared ride program. I thank the Commissioners for funding that. I know you guys don't do all the funding, but I worked there for nine years, and I can tell you, I had at least two phone calls a week from seniors that my husband passed, I don't drive. If it wasn't for the shared ride program, I'd never get to the doctor, my daughter's on, all kinds of things. So that's a big, big program. I encourage you guys, as you have been, you know, buy the buses, hire the people you need because the folks in Lackawanna County need that. It's one thing to have to walk three blocks and stand on the corner in the rain to get the big bus, but we used to come right to the door, not to the door, to the curb there at the house. That's a big deal. So I would encourage you guys to keep moving forward and funding your share of that program. With that, that's, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. And we have done, we've been doing all those things that you just mentioned, and we're very happy to do it. It's the right thing to do, and you mentioned autistic son, one of my dearest friends is an autistic son. And then they get to a point where they age out, and then it becomes more difficult. And that's another issue that the world hasn't quite gotten a hold of yet, but it's something people are still working on continually, and it's not a county problem by any means. Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Door's always open, whatever you need.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Thank you.
I have no idea.
You too. You have trouble.
Guilty.
Thank you. Opportunities for the public to address the board agenda items on.
Joan Hodawan, it's Scranton. With regard to the current payables, the first PDF file, on page six, I noted the $10,000 payments to three attorneys, Terrence McDonald, the attorney for Eric Krauser, David Sofinelli, attorney for Amy Halcoski, and the Tricolo Law Firm, attorneys for Brian Walker. It was my understanding that there was also supposed to be a payment made to Matthew Commerford, the attorney for Sadie Coyne. Was that simply an oversight or that's running later, they decided not to take the $10,000?
It hasn't been put through the system. It's in the system.
Okay, it's working its way through.
It's working its way through the system.
Okay. Now, what about the retiree, Randy Ramek? Did you ever get hold of him? Respond?
He has not responded.
Okay.
According to Attorney Caputo, he has not, they have not responded.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding that this flat fee of $10,000 was to cover through the preliminary hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
If the proceedings go beyond the preliminary hearing phase, will there be additional payments?
The agreement was for the preliminary hearing.
Okay. And in the event, this thing runs its way through the legal process, and one or more of these individuals are convicted, will they refund this fee to the county?
That I doubt, Joan.
Okay, so you didn't put any kind of...
I don't know what the, I don't know what the contract's.
Clawback penalty clause in...
Not that I'm aware of.
No, there's no provision for that in there, no.
Okay, so we would write off any money spent should anybody be convicted?
Correct.
Okay. And is, so then there's, but you didn't also impose a cap. You're doing this through the preliminary phase, but is it possible you might fund further legal fees if it goes beyond that?
No.
No, so this is it?
Preliminary hearing is it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Resolution 230199.
Approving current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables, excuse me. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 360-872-361257 inclusive, totaling $2,777,769.29. The county's electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $4,278,833.57. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 2nd, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? And Jones, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution 230194.
Entering into a medical assistance transportation agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a renewal of an agreement with the County of Lackawanna Transit System for Medical Assistance Transportation Program for the fiscal year '23 through '24 with a rate of $26.83 per trip. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 2nd, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of the Operations of Shared Ride, Mr. Wayne Williams.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
This is just the annual agreement that we conduct every year between the county and Colts Transportation to provide shared ride services to the medical assistance clients of the county.
This is a standard operating.
Correct, yes, sir.
Anyone have any questions for Wayne? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230195.
Accepting the proposal for Johnson Controls, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal from Johnson Controls for the access control system at the Department of Health and Human Services building in the amount of $36,596.58 adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 2nd, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Chief Information Officer, Mr. Michael Brown.
Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
This is to help protect the Franklin Building, where we have the Department of Health and Health and Human Services stationed at. We're using Johnson Controls as they are the current system of record that we actually use for all our badge access.
Anyone have any more questions for Mike? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230196.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging Service Agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging Personal and Professional Service Agreements for the fiscal years of '23 through '26 with CHC Compassionate, In-Home Healthcare, Telespont, AFCC Alliance, United Neighborhood Centers, TROPE Senior Activity Center, Taylor Senior Activity Center, Dunmore Senior Activity Center, and Attorney Brew Zero. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 2nd, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sam.
These contracts are recommended to be awarded to provide services to adults aged 60 and older residing in Lackawanna County as required under the Older Americans Act and funded through the Pennsylvania Department of Aging to include guardianship services, fiscal reimbursement services for in-home care and respite services, legal services, personal care services, home support services, adult day services, senior community center administration, and evidence-based health and wellness programming. Any questions?
No questions. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Slow on the pull there.
Yeah. Resolution 230197.
Entering into a laboratory services agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into a laboratory services agreement on behalf of the Lackawanna County Department of Health with Geisinger Clinic and Geisinger Community Medical Center. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 2nd, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Human Services, Mr. Bill Browning.
Bill. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a contract. Once we take over operations from the state, they'll be responsible for doing basic blood work, hepatitis screening, liver panels, et cetera.
Anyone have any questions for Bill on this? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Another question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230198.
Adopting the rules and regulations for the Department of Health, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners is hereby approve and adopt the rules and regulations for the Lackawanna County Department of Health as attached here, too. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 2nd, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
This is required for our certification. Prior to applying for the final certification from the Department of Health, we have to promulgate rules and regulations. They're essentially the same rules and regulation that the state currently operates, but each county must promulgate their own. The only difference is that under the state, they're forbidden from doing inspections of camps and like day camps and things of that, but they are required to license them. It's an anomaly in the law, but the local health departments are allowed to do that. In addition, the other change is that we're mandating the reporting of latent tuberculosis. That is not a rule in statewide, but most local health departments do that because latent tuberculosis can become active tuberculosis. So we want to make sure that we're capturing that data.
Some of the state laws can be very confusing for the departments, can't they, Bill? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution 230192.
These are appointments to the Multi-Purpose Stadium Improvements Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County on March 12th, 2024, established an improvements board, and whereas pursuant to Section 8.02(c)(1) of the Multi-Purpose Stadium Lease Agreement by and between the Multi-Purpose Stadium Authority of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, and SWB Yankees LLC, the parties must establish a board of directors defined in the lease agreement as the improvements board for the purpose of maintaining the capital improvements fund and overseeing the use of the funds available in the capital improvements fund for capital improvements as those terms are defined in the lease agreement. The lease agreement further states that the improvements board shall consist of two individuals appointed by a LEC and two individuals appointed by the county. Each individual designated by the county may be removed and replaced by the county at any time. Any capital improvements for which the improvements board authorizes the use of funds from the capital improvements fund shall be an authorized capital improvement as that term is defined in the lease agreement. And be further resolved, that in accordance with Section 8.02(c)(1) of the lease agreement as fore-said, Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners do hereby appoint Solicitor Donald J. Frederickson and reappoint Minority Solicitor PJ LaBelle to the improvements board effective immediately. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 2nd, 2022. Mr. Chairman, these are our annual appointments to the improvements board. Obviously, Ms. Attorney Frederickson is taking over for Attorney Regerio.
Attorney Regerio. This historically has been the solicitors, but it's not necessary. It can be anyone from Lackawanna County that's interested in being involved in it. But make no mistake, it does not have to be the solicitor from Lackawanna County that does this. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Appointments to the County of Lackawanna Transit System Authority.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals, the County of Lackawanna Transit System Colts Authority. Brian Dalton, 605 East Scott Street, Elephant, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2027. Larry Nguyen, 416 Marion Streets, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2024. Greg Nidel, 4-Nidel Drive, Archibald, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2025. And Michael Doherty, 70, Millennium Drive, Dunmore, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31st, 2027. Adopted a regular meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 2nd, 2023. Mr. Chairman, these are reappointments of four current members of Colts Board.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hodawan, it's Scranton. Let me begin by saying, although I do not own property in Lackawanna County, I am a taxpayer because my landlord, Charlie Jefferson, factored his property taxes into my rent. And for about 10 years, I've been paying the property taxes of a close relative who lives in Lackawanna County. So on that basis, let me say that I am not a happy taxpayer. First of all, I did not understand the explanations that were given in the local newspaper about why the county opted to pick up the legal fees for the employees of the Office of Youth and Family Services. But more than that, whether that was legal or not legal, the right thing to do or not the right thing to do, I was completely nonplussed by your decision to approve those legal fees without a formal vote behind closed doors out of the sight of the general public. I do not understand that. That does not pass this taxpayer's stink test. Had you done it in one of these meetings in front of the public, you would have had to have explained your reasoning, and then it would be public knowledge. Shouldn't have had to have been disclosed in a Times Tribune news story. But above and beyond that, I'm wondering what kind of precedent this sets for the future should any other county employees find themselves in a similar legal dilemma? Are we always going to pick up their legal fees if it's in the course of their, scope of their duties? I don't understand why prison guards who were accused of abusing inmates, it seems to me that was in the scope of their duties, but then, I'm not a lawyer. Maybe you could explain that after I sit down. My other point is, I need to know, what is the status of the action plan? Has it been completed? And if so, when are you going to release it to the public? Thank you.
Anyone else?
We will.
We will.
We will.
Commissioners, other business. Anything, Chris, from you?
Well, yeah. Chris Kelly from the Times Tribune, pretty much what Joan said.
Ditto.
Yeah, right. And can anyone explain, you know, I had a column today about the two advisory boards that are supposed to be, you know, have some connection. Maybe Mr. Browning could explain them, but you know, speaking to Ms. Hart yesterday, I guess talking to Mr. Browning through her, to an extent, we play a game of telephone. I'm just wondering if what you can tell us about these advisory boards. One that seems to have been rolled into this 501(c)(3), but there's one that's supposed to be specifically for the OIFs. As far as I was able to learn yesterday, it hasn't met since September of 2020, and all of the appointees, their terms have expired. Is there a board now? Does it meet? When was the last time? And what is its role? It's called an advisory board, but I think Mr. Browning said that it was mainly used for fundraising or something like that. It was pretty vague, so I just wonder if you guys can clear that up? Thanks.
Anybody else?
I think that, first of all, Commissioners, I'm sorry, that's right. Is there anybody else? It's just usually Chris and Joan. Anybody else want to speak? Okay. Okay, so we're good with public comment, then, right?
No one else? Public, go ahead, Brian.
The advisory boards, there's 30, we have 32 boards. So let me explain, like, you know, when their terms expired sometime in 2020, we were looking at, we were obviously in a shutdown status then. I mean, we were not, well, we were in shutdown status when their terms expired in 6th of 2020. So I mean, we weren't looking at appointing people at that moment in time. We were looking at, we were in red phase. Understandable, understandable. What I'm saying, what I'm getting at is that we had bigger priorities on our hands as far as board appointments are going on because of the actual shutdown that we incurred and then the vaccination plan that we put in place in 2021. Not to say that they shouldn't have met in 2022 or so on, so forth, but you understand where our mindset was on that. Okay. As far as what the boards do and that, Mr. Browning can't address you to that after the meeting, he'll be open to answer those questions for you.
Yes.
Yeah, the boards exist. If their term expires, the people just, they remain on board, much like Colts, like we just did now. Their terms expired months ago or a year ago.
They serve until their successor is appointed.
Thank you.
Yeah. They serve until their successor is appointed, so their terms stay in spash.
All right. That's it.
Why can't Mr. Browning do it now?
Well, that's, we're getting to that, Chris. Commissioners, other business, Mr. Shermack. Actually, I think maybe we'll have Mr. Browning come up and...
That's the way you want to do it?
Mr. Shermack, have anything? Commissioner Dymick, have anything else?
Maybe after, Bill.
Well, Mr. Browning, you want to come up and explain your modification plan of the program?
Thank you, Commissioners. Do you want me to read it in its entirety and then take questions? Or just...
We do. We want you to read it in entirety. They'll ask you any questions that they have, and then you'll be open to the press after the meeting's over to answer any questions that they have. Okay? And this is to answer Joan's question that was dittoed by Mr. Kelly. This is what you guys are calling the Plan. Well, it's being called the Plan of Action, but it's a modification plan. Okay?
Okay. Since last year, the Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Service has been adjusting current policies, practices, and procedures in response to the continuing reduction of OIFs staff and in response to the state granting a provisional license, which the state has indicated was solely due to lack of staff. The reduction of staff is based upon a national labor shortage, which has been an ongoing issue for all county OIFs staff. This shortage has been exacerbated in Lackawanna County by a perception that OIFs is being maliciously prosecuted, and they are at risk of arrest for simply doing their jobs as required by state and federal statutes. Where appropriate, new practices will be developed, and previous practices will be modified or abandoned in order to maximize the use of existing staff. This plan will continue to be modified as circumstances dictate. The county contract with, so the plan is as follows. The county contract with Service Access and Management, which began on July 1st, 2023, will provide case management services to children in their home and children in foster homes. After months of negotiation with the union and provider to adopt their practice to our philosophy and practice, SAM has reviewed over 40 applicants, has hired eight workers, correct that, nine workers, we just got information, and made an offer to one supervisor. OIFs and SAM is in constant communication to facilitate the transfer of caseloads. This will allow the remaining staff to focus solely on intake and assessment, which must remain with OIFs by statute. We can't contract out investigations. We have to, that is one thing the county is... We have to, that is one thing the county is responsible for. An independent contractor will monitor SAM's overall services to ensure the outcomes and service delivery are consistent with children and families' needs in Lackawanna County. So, it will be ongoing quality assurance. OIFIS Quality Assurance and Agency Administration will meet with SAM's staff to ensure day-to-day operations are consistent with the services required at the conclusion of all OIFIS investigations and assessments. So, once we're done with the investigations, we want to ensure that there is an active handoff to that case-for-case management. A weekly report of high-risk cases will be reviewed by senior administration, determine if resource and responses are adequate and allocated, and allocate limited resources as needed. This will assist the program managers who are being required to provide more direct supervision to individual units. So, this is something, high-risk cases were reviewed by supervisors and program managers, but a lot of them are doing direct service now, so we're moving that up to a senior administration. Any three, any child three years or younger whose family has had four or more GPS, those are neglect referrals of any type, must be scheduled for a weekly team review as soon as possible upon the fourth referral. While similar requirements were in place, the ability to meet has been compromised by the limited number of staff and the need to respond to increasing number of referrals and other responsibilities. Consistent application of this measure will be possible with the implementation of the SAM contract and bolstering the intake units. Once we have the SAM contract, we'll have our intake units fully staffed to, at least that's the hope. Any referral of family with any age, children who has six or more GPS referrals over the last three years will be reviewed administratively, and this is pretty much the same as above. They are currently reviewed at the unit level. This will move it up to administration and senior administration. Any referral of a case with a prior indicated child protective services or abuse referrals within the past two years will be scheduled for a senior administrative review. This will formalize the current voluntary and ad hoc process that is in place. Case workers will complete all dictation and safety assessments in the field before moving on to their next response rather than completing them at the end of the shift or at a later date. This is to ensure the information is being correctly relayed between shifts and that workers are using the fundamentals of safety assessment when the assessment is needed. With the rapidity of referrals coming in and the reduced number of staff doing paperwork at a later date is no longer possible since the agency needs access to information real time to quickly allocate the workforce. By regulation and by policy, they're allowed to submit it within 20, 48 hours, et cetera, but at this point, we just don't have that luxury. QA program managers will review cases for completed notes, ensure that the corresponding safety assessment aligns with the completed dictation. There appears to be discrepancies. Managers will meet with the caseworker and supervise to review the case. This is an additional measure put in place based on the finding during state licensing. This was, again, it was reviewed in an ad hoc fashion. This will formalize this. Program managers have begun direct supervision of certain individual units until said units have supervisors in place. That's self-explanatory. OIFIS will continue to meet with community partners to assist OIFIS in providing the highest-level service possible through the provision of additional supportive services such as parental visitation with children in foster care. OIFIS Administration will continue to meet with ASME to ensure workers' rights are not harmed with the procurement of these supportive services. We've met with several providers and are outlining what those contracts look, and then we will review them with the union when they're complete. OIFIS will continue to triage cases and respond to those cases needing immediate intervention as quickly as possible and respond to other cases as quickly as possible with the staff we have. Staff will use the 24-hour, seven-day-a-week access to senior managers to request guidance on critical responses. We simply don't have enough staff to respond to every single referral that comes in the agency immediately, so we have to triage and see which ones appear to be highest risk, have the highest safety concerns, and then we're making it at a senior-level status instead of leaving it to the supervisors, and so we'll take that burden off them, and they have access to me personally 24 hours a day. The county will continue to request substantive help from the state rather than their increased number of audits requiring staff to divert their time from investigating and assessing abuse and neglect. A letter is being prepared for the State Office of Children, Youth, and Families to outline in detail our immediate need for assistance. The previous request in April resulted in a request for the county to give OIFIS remote access to allow their staff to more easily monitor us from their homes and office because of their reduced staffing. The agency will look to purchase body cams for workers to enhance documentation and safety. Several options are currently being explored. We're looking at the least obtrusive body cams that could be put on caseworkers. They go into impossible situations with numerous things going on, and so we want to make sure that the video reflects exactly what they're seeing and also when there are safety threats that they will have that documented as well. All referrals of deplorable homes will be elevated to senior management. Photographs will be required in case of invalid referrals. This has been a requirement for years. However, enhanced quality assurance will ensure compliance. Implementation of the above will aid in compliance with this measure. And that's the body cams. A process will be developed to review all unfounded cases of abuse. Currently, all indicated or founded cases are reviewed by the agency director. Insolence are consistent with statute and regulation. The review of unfounded case will provide another level of quality assurance. As the agency moves to sole focus on intake investigations and assessment, this will become possible. This will allow us then to look at what cases are unfounded and for two things. One, should it have been open in the agency at all and have the resource devoted, or was the decision made and, you know, with all the available evidence? And then last, the county will set up a multidisciplinary task force to address children living in school. The scope of the problem requires involvement in many aspects of the community in addition to county child welfare. Child welfare's role in these cases is time-limited based on numerous legal factors, including but not limited to reasonable effort requirements in the completion of service plan goals. Once the agency makes the reasonable efforts, once the family completes their service plan goals, then we necessarily have to close the case. We understand that if we close the case, that we are not legally able to go into their homes and check after the case is closed, so we're trying to develop this task force as a program to divert cases from requiring child welfare intervention in the first place and to ensure that the resources are available once the court or child welfare involvement is terminated. Represented from area social service, law enforcement, child advocacy, schools, commerce, et cetera, are needed to build a community response. The agency has been conducting a search for interventions nationally and internationally that can be implemented in this county. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Browning.
Bill, so, under number one, independent contractor, do we have one that's going to oversee SAM's?
Yes, we have an independent contractor. He's met with them. He's discussed what his role is in being a conduit, making sure, because our program managers and everyone else is doing double duty with supervision on individual cases, so he'll be able to monitor them, make sure that they're in regulatory compliance, and also important is make sure that our philosophy is maintained. We've had a philosophy in this county that has been adopted by the state and approved by the state and presented nationally, and we don't want to lose that.
Hopefully, you know, my concern is just that all these modifications and updates are just to make sure no children fall through the cracks here, you know? Are we going to, can we get like monthly updates on how modifications are progressing? Can we look at...
Sorry, we'll send, sometimes unfortunately, I may have to even be more frequent than monthly, but as it's evolved, we'll send everything to the Board of Commissioners.
All right, and then this, we got, since we have our provisional license, I mean, is that really from lack of staff? That was the main reason?
They met with, the exact words from the regional office when they met with my entire administrative staff is that they felt that it was entirely due to lack of staff. They also stated that if they failed to give us a provisional license, that they would become the focus of law enforcement.
How's staffing at the state level?
According to the deputy secretary, said that they're understaffed.
And they couldn't send someone to supervise us personally, they had to do it remotely because they're understaffed.
Right, the deputy secretary requested that they, they didn't want them to have to come into our office. Our position was, we want them to come into our office so we can actually have a dialogue with the people that are supervising us or overseeing us. They felt that they're understaffed and unable to do that, but currently, we have secure machines in our office, and we're allowing them to come in and use the secure machine, and hopefully that'll allow us to interact with the people that are reviewing us.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Commissioner Dominic, any questions for Mr. Browning?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. It's... No.
No.
Go ahead.
We've already addressed.
No, I was telling...
We addressed the press afterwards.
Yes, Chris Kelly. I, go ahead, Mr. Jeffress, you have something to say? Chris, you had your opportunity. Mr. Jeffress is going to speak now.
I was going to say, it's a $3 million investment, it's a handicap assessment.
It's opening on Saturday at 11 o'clock.
Splash pad has been opened.
So, Bill, you're going to talk with Chris and the press?
Yeah.
Okay. And just a reminder too, coming up August 5th, August 5th is Sergeant William Ganas Day in Lackawanna County. He was one of the American soldiers in the iconic photo where they raised the flag on Mount Sarabachi in Iwo Jima, so, and this sergeant was killed three days later, and I don't think they've ever located his body, but August 5th.
Where at, Chris?
No, they're still looking for him.
Where at?
Where what?
Where they having the memorial at?
No, no, it's just, it's, it's just, it's August 5th is his day, William Ganas Day. Just a reminder.
Okay. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.